Ready? This weekend was a great day in Aggieland. And probably all know, right? Aggie's an miracle on the field. So with that, I think I'm going to invite Mayor Fronto Allen to lead the invitation. He has a lot to be thankful.
Occasionally, we do. Let's pray. Father God, we thank you so much for this night and opportunity to to serve and to make decisions for our town. But we thank you for this great country we live in, the great state we live in, this great town we live in. The blessings you've given to us, Father, that you chose to give to us that we deserve. While we are tonight, we make decisions for the town. Be with our town as we grow, that you'll just be with us and guide us with your mercy, your grace, and your direction and protection, Father. Thank you for the leaders from the state, the federal, the local level. Just ask that you be with them. Father, we pray these things in your name. Amen.
Amen. Please join me standing for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of this space. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice as well. Please be seated up. Good evening and welcome, council, staff, and members of the audience, to the council meeting for Monday, October 11th. For the record, we are all council members except Mr. Freeman. With the six out of the seven council members present, we have Coram. Now time is seven oh one, and we are in session. The first item is announcement. Pursuant to Texas Government Code, Section 551 dot oh four one five, council and members of the staff may make announcements. Council, are there any announcements?
Mayor.
Mr. Regan.
I'd like to wish our Sunnyvale Police Department a happy birthday. One year. Thank you for your efforts. It's fun knowing that you guys are around. You know, I've not heard anything negative, only positive. You guys, you particularly Chief, have excelled beyond what I thought could be done with various different awards and things that you've done. Thank you. I look forward to continued success with you guys.
Good job, Chief. Mr. Allen.
Mayor, I'd like to echo what Councilman Regan said, as well as commend all those, the fire, the police, and the town for the National Night Out this last weekend. It was really a good turnout. The weather was great. The chief was able to bring in a helicopter, which was really nice. It just added flair to it. So it was a great night. Those things come with a lot of work for our staff, and I just want to thank them and the rest of people that showed up tonight on Tuesday for that. It was a great event. Thank you guys very much.
That's awesome. I was going to make it, but I ended up in Houston on nine thirty. I couldn't drive any later than that. So otherwise, I would have come for that. But great job, everybody. Mr. Clark.
I also want to echo the previous thought shared. I was not at National Night Out, but my family went and they loved it. And my my son now wants to be a helicopter pilot. So it's very exciting. Two other announcements I want to make. The for Thanksgiving this year, we're going to have our third annual Turkey Day run. And for the festivities, we are actually going to be making T-shirts. Now, the middle school art students are designing the shirts for us this year. And so I'd actually ask all of you that are listening and out there to to participate in a voting. We're going to have a vote to see which which design is is chosen. So the link is in the weekly newsletter, but also I'll read it here so you can all log in and vote right now. There's a lot of great artwork, and one of them will be on our shirt this Thanksgiving for for our run. So the it's on Survey Monkey. So grab your pencil and paper. SurveyMonkey.com forward slash R forward slash S V Turkey Trot. So basically Survey Monkey R and then S V Turkey Trot. So if you don't, if you didn't get a chance to write that down, you can call council member Eldridge, and he can pass it on to you. So hope you all vote. It's a pretty great sign.
If you need a cell number, please call. Again, Mr. Clark, you also want to talk about registration is open?
No, you can go ahead.
Okay, see, the Turkey Trot again, please come and participate. It's a great event, great community event. I think a lot of participants in the last two years, registration is already open. You may participate in the Turkey Trot free of charge. But if you would like to donate, lay put our money to the animal shelter, you may do so. I have signed up with my family this year already. It's I'm really looking forward to it. I hope those who are listening will bring yourself, your family, and your friends for the Turkey Trot. It's a fun event. Our staff does a phenomenal job with that.
And then the third item I want to announce was the Chamber of Commerce will be hosting a Truck or Treat. I believe this will be the second annual Truck or Treat. It'll be held at the high school parking lot. It's going to be on Friday, October 29th. It's from six to eight. And the Chamber of Commerce is also looking for sponsors. So if you're business or if you're interested in sponsoring, please reach out to the Chamber of Commerce. But it's our our first annual Truck or Treat last year was was a big hit, and we expect it to be a lot bigger this year. So I hope you can come to that.
So is anyone to announce the Chick-fil-A opening?
Yes. So we are really excited that Chick-fil-A did open on October 7th. We're actually having Chick-fil-A for dinner tonight in support. So hope everybody goes out and supports them. It's really exciting to see new businesses come to town. I also wanted to just tag on to the events subcommittee messages, commercial that Kevin started. But we, in addition to the events already mentioned, we also have a Veterans Day event on November 11th. And at that event, we ask all veterans to come, and we do have an award that we give to each of them. And then we, I think we're having a flyover and musical performances, and this is going to be really a nice event. And that starts at five o'clock on November 11th, and everybody's welcome. It's on the front lawn of Town Hall. And then we mentioned the Turkey Trot. But then also, we have our Christmas event coming up. It's our tree lighting event, and this year we did get a sponsor. Republic is going to sponsor our snow play area. So we will have a real snow out on the front lawn for people to play in, and it was really nice of them to sponsor it. But we are looking for additional sponsors for other aspects of that event. So if you're interested, just give me a call. Thank you.
Susan, for the Veterans Day, is there any way people just veterans just show up or we invite some of them? Those who participated in the past?
The ones that we know of, we invite, but we also put messages on Facebook and in our e-newsletter, just encouraging if you know a veteran to bring them to the event. It's, you know, it's a really nice event. The Sons of the American Revolution, do I have that right? Are also going to be on hand. They're going to assist us, and it's just, it's a very special event, very poignant. So I hope all the veterans will show up and celebrate with us.
Mr. Allen.
Just want to tag on the flyby, it's going to be Cabinoff Flight Museum from Addison. They did it last year. They'll do it again with smoke. If you don't know what Cabinoff Flight Museum, check it out online. It's at Addison Airport. They got a lot of old planes and helicopters and just paraphernalia that's really cool to go look at. It's great history stuff. They'll be making.
That's two years in a row, right? That'll be?
That's correct.
Great, great flyover last year. Again, we honor our veterans, so please, please come and join us and participate in this especially. Any other announcements for anybody? Okay, that's really good announcement. Okay, public forum. At this time, let me invite members of the audience to come forward and speak to the council on any items other than legal matters or personal matters or items on the agenda. If you'd like to come forward, you may do so at this time. If you are joining us via Zoom, you may raise your hand. No one is coming forward from the chamber. Erica, anyone raising their hands?
No, sir.
No hands raised, so I'm going to close the public forum. Moving on to white number three, recognition of the Finance Department for their outstanding work, thoroughness, dedication, teamwork, and goal attainment that led to the Town of Sunnyvale receiving the GFOAS Distinguished Budget Presentation Award for its budget. Again, to know, to let you know, everybody know how good we are, our staff is. This is the fourth consecutive year that the Finance Department has received this honor. Mr. Captain, you want to add anything, ma'am?
Yes, sir. Just for those of you who are watching who might not know what this award is, it's given out by the Government Finance Officers Association. The award represents a significant achievement by the entity. It reflects the commitment of the governing body and staff to meeting the highest principles of government budgeting. In order to receive the budget award, the entity had to satisfy nationally recognized guidelines for effective budget presentation. These guidelines are designed to assess how well an entity's budget serves as a policy document, a financial plan, an operations guide, and a communications device. Budget documents must be rated proficient in all four categories and in the 14 mandatory criteria within those categories. So I that's a, I'm reading from a press release from GFOA, and you know, that's something we're really excited about, just the growth in our budget and our finance department with the addition of Sherry, who is certified by GFOA. So, you know, we're very proud of them, and I think Sherry's going to talk a little bit more after you present them with their awards to the team.
Before we come down for the award, let me read the plaque. Government Finance Officers Association Distinguished Budget Presentation Award presented to Town of Sunnyvale, Texas for the fiscal year beginning October 1, 2020, signed by the Executive Director Christopher P. Council, if you could join me in honoring our finance department, may I ask the finance department to come forward, please?
I just wanted to say a few little words to both of you. Guys worked really, really hard this last year. And during the transition between the two finance directors, you both stepped up to the plate and did a wonderful job. Your work is obvious because you did that award for us. And then when I came aboard, you welcomed me with open arms, and I really appreciate that. During this last few months, doing the budget, y'all were valuable to me. I mean, extremely valuable. I really, really appreciate that. So I have a token of my appreciation for you. Make sure I give the right one to the right person.
Thank you very much.
That's gold bar, right? Line item 1106. Major team. Okay, moving on to the constant agenda items, council, we have four items, item number four, five, six, and seven. Would anyone like to remove any of the items from the concerned agenda? If not, can I have a motion to approve considered items four, five, six, and seven?
Motion to approve four, six, and seven. Because five, four, five, six, seven, thank you, sir.
Sent by Mr. Allen, second, oh, second, do I say second or? Second by Mr. Clark to approve constant item four, five, six, and seven. All in favor, signify. All opposed, motion passed, six, or Mr. Freeman is absent. Moving on to the discussion action items, item number eight. Discuss, consider, and act upon appointing members to serve on the Towns 4B Economic Development Corporation, Library Board, Board of Adjustments, and Planning and Zoning Commission. Council, do you have a motion?
Mayor, I have a motion for each of the boards.
Yeah, let's just do one word at a time. How about that? That'll be okay for y'all?
We're good. Planning and zoning, motion to appoint Carly Hagan, Troy Childers as full members, to appoint Sarah Bradford and Anna Kumar as alternate members, and to reappoint James Goldar, Don Klein, King Moss as regular members. This is a planning and zoning.
Okay, motion made by Mr. Allen. Is there a second? Second by Mr. Finch. Any discussions?
Yes, I just, I want to say this before, you know, this is regarding all the people we've met, generally the P and Z, but this will apply to all the boards and commissions. We had a great, a great amount of people that were interested and came out and want to get involved. And so I think is definitely the largest group that we've ever had, least when I've been involved, as well as, I think, probably the most talented group we've ever had in a long time. So it was basically, I just want to say thank you for everybody that did come out and want to get involved in board or commission. And so thank you is some hard decisions, but we definitely want to have everybody involved, and we'll, I think, go into that in a few minutes, what we can do there.
All in favor, signify. All opposed, motion passed, six, or Mr. Freeman is absent. Can I have a motion with respect to the 4B place, 4B Economic Development Corporation?
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion for 4B. Motion to appoint Cameron Hassan and Patty.
Potman Abin.
There you go. Thank you, sir. As members of 4B and to reappoint Nikki Anthony and K. Paul Cash. Again, this is for 4B.
Motion made by Mr. Allen, is there a second? Second by Mr. Eldridge to appoint the names listed by, as I'm sorry, Mr. Regan, second by Mr. Regan to appoint the names Mr. Allen called out. Other additional discussions? All in favor, signify. All opposed, motion six, or Mr. Freeman is absent, Mr. Regan, ma'am, my apologies. Okay, can I have a motion for Board of Adjustments?
Mayor, for Board of Adjustments, I'd like to make the motion to reappoint Sajid John, Dee Blackwood to the Board of Adjustments.
Motion made by Mr. Allen to appoint Sajid John and Dee Blackwood to reappoint. So a second, sergeant. Second by Mr. Eldridge. Additional discussions? All in favor, signify. All opposed, motion passed, six, or Mr. Freeman is absent. Next one is library.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to, for the Library Board to reappoint Cindy Barnowski, Joby Joseph, Steve Blow, and Desri Ware as regular members on the Library Board, and to appoint George Ann Moss, Carrie Maddox as alternate members to the Library Board.
Motion made by Mr. Allen, so a second. Second by Mr. Regan. The discussions. All in favor, signify. All opposed, motion passed, six, or? Rachel, did we get all of them right? Okay. Yeah, again, again, to to. Stay, restate what Mr. Clark said. A lot of good applicants, so pleased to see members of residents and citizens want to participate and contribute. We are so blessed to have so many qualified and willing and just good people coming forward to. First of all, they leave in our town, and they are willing to come back and forward. And so for the rest of the people who are point, the applied and interviewed, we'll be reaching out to you for you to consider joining in one of the Citizens Committee and serve this town with your talents and skills. So please be on the lookout for a town staff to reach out to you with the with that opportunity, and hopefully you'll take it, and hopefully you'll come back and and join us and serve in different capacity and be a part of this town. Or active, active members of this town. Is there anything else, Miss Gatri? Okay. Moving on to item number nine, discuss, consider, and act upon appointing a member of the Board of Adjustment serve as chairperson and alternate chairperson. Council, is there a motion?
Mayor, I'll make a motion. I'd like to make a motion to appoint Lyndon James as chairperson and Joe Turner as co-chair for the Board of Adjustments.
Motion made by Mr. Allen, is there a second? Okay. Seconded by Mr. Finch. Everyone heard the motion? Other additional discussions? All in favor, signify. All opposed, motion passed, six, or Mr. Freeman is absent. Rachel, did we get everything right? Thank you, ma'am. Moving on to white number 10, discuss, consider, and act upon awarding a contract to KSA Engineers Incorporated for the preliminary design of a new animal shelter and service center facility and authorizing the town manager to exit the contract in an amount not to exceed 37,500. Mr. Golf, good evening, sir.
Here we go. I think that's better. Okay. So this item is to approve a contract with KSA Engineers for the preliminary design of a new animal shelter and service center facility. And as a reminder, the service center, can you turn the mic up a little bit? The service center houses our Public Works Department and Parks Department. You'll recall that replacing the current animal shelter has been on the town's capital improvement plan for the last few years, and we're also interested in exploring a new service center as well at this time. But KSA was selected after an RFQ was released earlier this summer. Eight firms submitted for that RFQ. They were, the responses were ranked by a committee of staff members, and we interviewed the top three, and KSA was unanimous selection of the committee. KSA's proposed scope includes a site analysis and preliminary site planning for the four acres that the town recently purchased for the police, next to the police department. And the, it would also include a facilities needs assessment for the two new facilities, and then a developing an opinion of probable construction costs so that we can have some idea of what it would take to construct these new facilities. We would then make a decision as a town whether or not to proceed with one or both of the facilities, but this is an important first step to figure out what cost we're talking about. The proposed cost for this scope is 37,500, and about 35,000 of that was included in the budget for this year, and will absorb the rest of that into operating, the operating budget for for the town. Happy answering questions, you may.
Thank you, Mr. Golf. Let me open up a public comments. If there's anyone from the members of the audience who'd like to come forward and speak to the council on item number 10, you may do so at this time. If you are joining us via Zoom, you may raise your hand. No one is coming forward from the chamber. Erica, anyone raising their hands?
Yes, sir.
No hands raised, so I'm going to close the public comments. Council, do you have any questions or comments on item number 10? Questions for staff or comments? Mr. Finn, did you have a question, sir? Okay, if there are no comments or discussions, can I have a motion?
Motion approved, Adam Chan.
I will second.
Motion made by Mr. Eldridge and second by Finch to approve item number 10 as presented. Everyone heard the motion? Other additional discussions? All in favor, signify. All opposed, motion passed, six, or Mr. Freeman is absent. Moving on to white number 11, discuss, consider, and act upon authorizing staff to create three additional firefight paramedic positions and to begin the recruitment process. That be?
Me, sir.
Miss Gatri, there is, ma'am.
Um, so as part of the 2020, 21, 22 budget process, you voted to allocate $166,138 for a future council-approved project. Since adoption of the budget, the town was notified that we will not receive the safer grant that we had applied for that would have provided funding for three new firefighters. So the proposal before you would ask that you allocate that 166,000 towards what would be two firefighter paramedics. And then when we come back to you in November with the rollover money, the money that is excess reserves from last fiscal year, that we add the third at that time. So we'd be approving all three, but the money would not happen for the third until November when we close out the books. I'd like to just kind of the why, I think, is really important. So I'm going to go over some data, and then we'll kind of move to the humanistic piece of this. So next slide. So just as a memory, the calls for service last year, total calls were 825 calls. We had 64 overlapping calls and 23 mutual aid calls. Next slide. So for this year, 21, 2021 year-to-date calls for service, so the total calls this year were 1,205. And obviously, we haven't finished the year, so we just took an average of the first nine months and extrapolated it out. That's a 47% increase year-over-year in calls. Now, there is, if you look in February, there's a little anomaly. That's Stormageddon. And so, you know, obviously, it happened. We can't pretend that it didn't happen, and they didn't have those calls. Those were actual calls. They had to go on. But if it bothers you to see that kind of outlier data point, I did run the numbers without that, and it comes to still a 37% increase, even if I take that data point out.
Can you, do we have a reason why September is, August is so high?
That's just what it is. There's not, yeah, I mean, that's what the calls are.
I'm just looking at previous years, you didn't see that spike. This was no more.
What, it jumped up in August? And we don't have benchmark data yet since that month just ended. I think it depends upon the community. If you're asking me about South Padre Island, absolutely.
But even if you look at the 2018, that's the light blue, yellow, 2020, you don't see that spike. So there must, something must have happened. Yes, sir.
But if you look, you see a slow progression from April, May, June, July, a little bit of a dip, then back up in August, and then September. So I mean, we're seeing above average across the board. So specifically in August, it just was a lot of calls. The, so without the February anomaly, it's a 37% increase year-over-year. So next slide. If you look at just EMS, and I, I want to. If you look at just EMS and I I want to delve into EMS because it is a lot of our calls. And it is, there's some complexities related to EMS right now that we'll talk about at the end. But if you look at the EMS calls, you don't have that February anomaly because it wasn't, they weren't, the calls were not related to EMS at that time. But when you just do year over year, it's a thirty seven percent increase in calls for service for EMS. Next slide, please. Then overlapping calls, again, very complex, and we'll talk a little bit about this at the end, but we had one hundred and sixty eight calls. I already normalized this data taking out the February spike for overlapping calls because I think that would have really skewed the data. So the one sixty eight is already taking that out. With that, it's a hundred and seventy percent increase over twenty twenty. Now, twenty twenty was a little bit lower than normal. It kind of had dipped down. So I went ahead and ran the number for twenty nineteen, just so we make sure we're really looking at. You know what the growth is and it's still a fifty five percent increase over twenty nineteen. So no matter which way you look at it. We're really increasing not only our call volume but overlapping. Overlapping gets really complicated for us because of the small amount of people that we have, regardless of the size. That really makes it more complex and I'm going to get to that, but let's go to the next slide first. So I just couldn't help, you know, with all of this, we're busy, we're busy, we're busy. I wanted to make sure I pointed out average turnout times. Now, every one of these charts I've showed you is in your monthly report. You see them every single month. We're just trying to make some meaning out of all the data at this point. Turnout time is the kind of the piece the firefighters can control. This is how long does it take them to get out of the station? You know, they could be dead asleep in the middle of the night. They get woken up, they have to get dressed, they have to get in the vehicle and they have to get out and radio that they're on their way. So this, that's the turnout time and you can see how much we've worked on this. Some of this is just good training that the chief has given. Some of it is great leadership, you know, within the rank and file. But some of it is technology and if you go into the station, I don't know how many of you have been in there lately. They've moved to an actual, it's a big TV monitor that shows all the calls and then they have the technology in the trucks now as well. So. They're not trying to get all the information while they're in their station. They're able to get right in the truck and get on the road and they have it all coming to them. So there's a lot of little reasons. But I'm really, really proud. And this is truly the data point I watch every single month is how are we doing on the piece that we can really control? It's hard to control traffic, but we can control how long it takes for us to get out. And you see the target of one, one thirty to get out of the station. You can see we're well beating that. So excited about that data. Okay, next slide. So some of the things that are like. Making this a complex situation. By the way, these are real pictures from. Calls that the fire department has been on. That's actually a truck that you see on the front of that train. So we've had an increase in motor vehicle accidents, particularly on eighty. These are hard calls for them to go on because usually there's an EMS element in it. Plus they have to take the truck out to block traffic. That's the only way, safe way to work those calls. So when you do that, think about, that's all four. Right now we have four guys per shift and I use the guys loosely. We have four guys per shift. And so two are in the in the ambulance and two are on the truck, you know, doing traffic and then helping. So then that's the second bullet, traffic blocking on the highway. Then the third, medical transports. So some of the things that have been happening lately is we're having, you know, we're having bypasses from certain hospitals. So we're having to go farther afield. So like going to Parkland or to Children's or to Baylor in order to leave the patients. And then also you see delays in transferring care at hospitals. They're anecdotally been one to two hour waits once we arrive at a hospital to be able to transfer custody of the patient. All that time, our two, half of our crews and sometimes three. In a severe case, we had a young man hit on a bicycle recently. Where it took three people in the ambulance because you have two working on a severe patient and one driving. So now we have three. Of our staff out of four, out of the city for two, three hours at a time. So very complex situation. Is that a forever? Probably not. Hopefully as COVID, you know, gets more under control, that situation will rectify. But I think some of the other things still point to this need. Population growth. You all know that we went up to seven thousand, almost seventy nine hundred people in the twenty twenty census. Plus, you know, we're adding new homes every single day. Plus, we have a million square feet of commercial industrial. Real estate under construction right this minute with probably another million in the hopper. And so with that brings a lot of employees, a lot of traffic, more complex firefighting. Needs that they're going to have to address, you know, unique issues in those buildings. Taller buildings. So there's that population growth is just not more houses. There's a lot that's involved with that. Commuter growth, I mean, same thing with the police department. Every time there's a crash anywhere within our city limits on eighty, we're the ones responding to that. And they are not easy calls to respond to. Commercial and industrial growth I talked about. Next slide. So our recommendation to council is to use your council project funding, and I listed the account number there. To fund two firefighter paramedic positions at a cost of one hundred and sixty two thousand and four dollars. That's fully loaded with benefits and that's the firefighter paramedic level. If we couldn't find a paramedic and we hired at EMT, it would be less where and then send them to school, but we're trying to hire at the paramedic level. And then approve a third position because I'd like to have our whole strategy kind of approved. To be funded from excess reserves and an additional eighty one thousand two dollars annually. And we would do that budget amendment in November. So we would not hire that person until that budget amendment was done. But we'll go ahead and post for all three and test for all three, select for all three because it'll take us some time. So that allows for one additional FTE on each of the three shifts. And you see the individual firefighter paramedic costs there. Next slide. So this is actually, this particular picture is from that Fire Chief Long Creek. Is that correct? Awesome. Thank you. And this is where you had, I think, three different entities responding. And so it kind of gets to that mutual aid discussion. But I asked them to provide me with just some national standards. So when we're talking national standards, we look at NFPA. Engine, you really need a minimum on duty of four. So if you have a fire, the engine responds. You normally have four on the engine because you have two in, two out. If you don't have two in, two out, you can't send anybody in. So unless you have somebody like, we know somebody's literally gonna die right then. You know, they really aren't supposed to send anybody in if they only have two out. So when you have a situation where you have three of your firefighters leaving town and are gone for three hours, if we were to have a fire, we'd be relying upon mutual aid. And then current staffing is two, we're proposing that we would add a third to the engine. And then you would still have the two on the ambulance. Next slide, please. For ambulance staffing, the standards is a little complex. By the way, this is also a real picture. It's fuzzy because Doug took it. But. I think he was shaking. Yeah, no. And I mean, it's not lighthearted at all. This was a horrible accident. This is a truck that overturned when they missed the turn at East Fork. I mean, this just makes it very real. Obviously, the driver perished. I think in the middle of the situation, they were trying to extract him. The spouse showed up. So they were dealing with the spouse trying to block the view as they were trying to extricate this gentleman from this truck. I mean, it's horrific. And I only include such awful pictures because I really want you to see that it's not, oh, we're a small town and we're not dealing with really complex, dangerous situations. I mean, this is, I I get all the dispatch calls for fire on my phone and I feel like there's a a critical wreck almost daily on eighty that they're responding to. So. So on an ambulance, advanced life support, when it's an advanced life support emergency call. You should have a minimum of two members trained as emergency medical technician, paramedic level. And two members trained at the BLS basic life. Support, BLS basic life support, I think. Yeah, thank you. Arriving on the scene within the established travel time because there's multiple jobs, not just the people in the ambulance. You always hear that. Why is the truck showing up when the ambulance comes? It's because that's what national standards tell us to do. Our current staffing is we have two on the ambulance. And we're proposing to add just the third person that could go between the fire truck or the ambulance, depending upon the situation. So with that, that is our recommendation. We're very happy to answer questions. The chief is here, can give you any details that I might have missed, but. We do ask for your support with this. Thank you.
Chief, would you mind? So while you're coming in, I want to say how much we appreciate you and your team's support. I mean, each and all for sitting here, this guy is going to attest to some level of support your people have offered. So.
We certainly appreciate you. The support we get as far as with the town staff as well. So, Mary Council, we're certainly appreciative of all that. We certainly are. In fact, I appreciate the opportunity being here. The town manager gave a very excellent presentation. As she mentioned, it's it's the true story that's out there. Our firefighters are are dedicated ones and they do show that they really want to provide the services to this community. And that's all that we work toward is is helping the community and serve this community. Before I get into some other things, just to clarify as well, when y'all were talking or asking about the August rises. Those were total calls which included our EMS. So COVID has been a big part of our our responses. Just from from the community itself. So that in itself caused that increase that y'all were seeing in in the August one. The overlapping calls to give a little more detail, those are the calls that soon as we get toned up for one call. We get a call for another incident. And then sometimes we may be out on an incident, just getting there and then we're getting called for another incident. So we do get stretched thin. And and the pictures that you were seeing is is another. Show that things like this take time. You know, the extrication of the truck driver was a four hour ordeal. But you have to understand too, that's where everybody's out on that one call with four people. We've worked hard talking with the the town manager and our schedule that we would like to see is. I've gotten phone calls before and go like, chief, we got both ambulances. They're in Dallas and nobody's here, just me. I've told and talked to my captains, our priorities, our ambulances to get out to the community. If we get a primary call for a primary emergency, it goes. If the engine stays in the house or they go out and help and then come back, they're the ones that jump on the the ambulance to go on another call. What we're trying to do is we're eating elephant little at a time with personnel, adding another person. Well, even though we use two ambulances out, that at least gives somebody back at the station, preferably the captain. That can at least start a call for emergency, get there, find out what he needs and then he can start calling for help. Otherwise, it's it's just kind of a waiting game. So I do appreciate our neighbors in Mesquite. They are, they're, they are the ones that when we deplete our ambulances and we call for them, Mesquite has has come. And we always try to make an appearance with them as well. That's one of my things as well as I don't want to feel like that they're just out there alone. Just subsidizing us when we're we're there as much as we can. So. That's what I'm saying is with the guys that we have, it's it's critical for us. They see it. And they want to do all they can in supporting this community. And the support that we can get. From council and the community itself is is much appreciative. And and just to say that. We are there to serve and and it really. It hurts sometimes when we're just not there immediately like we should. So we certainly want to ask for for these these positions. Like I said, we're we're taking that elephant bites at a time because we realize it's it's a false thing, but we certainly appreciate what what y'all can do.
This chief, again, I'm not here to tell you what to do with your business. You know your business more than I do. Just a simple question. Again, I don't know the distribution of calls. I would assume daytime calls are higher. So you, is it, is the right approach is a one per shift or how? Maybe still three, but two in the morning and one of the.
No, it's.
Again, just on my call, your call.
So I, and I understand. It's it's pretty much a standard request in our departments. You know, the one person is for the twenty four hours a day. There's, there's not a daytime service and a nighttime service per call type thing. I consider to tell you that we've only been on some day calls, but then sure, we'll have some night calls. Weekends, sometimes we're up, sometimes we're down. So it's it's a twenty four hour, seven day a week. Just being prepared.
Yeah, yes, sir. You know your business more than I do and I respect your decision. Council question for the chief or staff. You say Alitch?
I was gonna say comment, really impressive times there. I love you guys are driving stuff down. You're doing faster, getting better. That's awesome. I'm going down by what, half, I think, on average? That's impressive. It's impressive.
But we we appreciate it because as as the town manager spoke. We're trying to take advantage of every opportunity we can. That's why we wanted for the safer grand and we're still going to back up and figure out. How it comes in the wild fours and and stuff like that. But the things that we can try to control is the ones we are controlling. And, you know, for me, as as she mentioned, we have a monitor and so I'm monitoring the times at the hospitals. Because it's a strategy for us as well, the knowing, okay, well, you know, they've been there for a long time and they're in Dallas and we kind of look at those type of things. The the response calls is is absolutely because of the time factors of actually getting on scene. It's it's a challenge from going across town as as such. So that's why we're repositioning the fire department as we speak. So. But the the times to to get giddy up and go, that certainly helps and that does. And the guys are doing a great job with it as as well.
Chief, let me ask you. So this will make it five times three fifteen plus UT sixteen full time? Then we still use the voluntary?
Yeah, Peggy is our. I got multiple hats on her. She's administrative assistant. She's.
Sixteen plus one, seven, seventeen.
She, she does inspections for us. She does administrative work for us and puts puts the message together. Like I said, does the inspections, fire investigations and that sort of thing. So again, we use everybody we can.
Do we still use voluntary firefighters? So we don't.
Yes, sir. We have, we have a few volunteers and I certainly appreciate their help as well.
Obviously, and we had some issues with getting people on time.
Well, yeah, that's that's been the thing. When I first got here, I I realized we do have volunteers. I started my service in the volunteerism. It's just the time period in which to get there. And. When you, when in the past, when there was a small community and and less demand for calls, but. We've obviously just, we've just gone completely out of sight almost for for these kinds of calls. So. We truly like the volunteers, but they too, it's a nationwide thing with the volunteers and and everybody has their own social lives now that we're seeing and they make those choices.
Plus, you're trying to recruit more people to serve on the SIR, right? The community, imagine that's that additional, you know, some help you'll get from the regular citizens like us.
Oh, absolutely. The the chief and I worked on our national night out with the with the help of SIR, twelve, fourteen people there for SIR that were were cranking up. They're going to be a tremendous help for us for both police and fire. They helped the traffic control situations and and man the the area too. So. We're grabbing everybody that we can so we can do the best we can to serve this community.
Thank you, sir. I had no other questions. Council, any question for the chief or staff? Chief, thank you very much, sir.
We appreciate you.
Mr. Parker, you have a question, sir?
Say, thank you, chief. Appreciate it. Appreciate what you and your team do. Thank you.
Counsel, this is the public hearing item. Let me open up for public comments. If anyone from the members of the audience would like to come forward and speak to the council. Uh, if anyone from the members of the audience would like to come forward and speak to the council on item number eleven. Item number eleven. Please come forward, if you are joining us via Zoom, you may raise your hand. No one is coming forward from the chamber, Eric, anyone raising their hands?
No, sir.
No hands raised, we're going to post the public comments. Susan, here the approval is more than hundred and sixty, allocate the hundred and sixty six thousand plus to bring in two firefighters. Then in November, we'll come back, the council staff will come back and ask for the next position.
Yeah, we would in this action be creating three F T Es. Um, two would be funded by that line item, the third would be funded when we come back in November.
So just a staggering of the staff?
Yes, sir, but it probably will take us that long to post interview, test, the whole nine yards, so it's probably gonna
You're just gonna go for three people and we just tag them?
That's what I thought is have one process, get three, there may be a little delay on the third person, but that's our strategy, sir.
Again, if staff wants to come back earlier, you know, and be hesitant to come back, I'm sure, we can, council can look into it.
Yes, sir.
Okay, council, uh, can I have a motion with respect to item number eleven, please?
There, I make a motion to accept, uh, uh, authorized. I got I got lost on the item, I'm gonna approve item number eleven, as we discussed.
Second, second. Made by Mr. Allen, second by Mr. Finch, to approve item number eleven. As presented. Everyone heard the motion? Are there discussions? All in favor signify. All opposed motion pass six, so, and it sometimes runs through, runs over, and I I have the same confusion, so no, no problems at all. Um, moving on to item number twelve, review the list of towns comparative cities adopted by town council for benchmarking purposes, Ms. Guthrie?
Yes, um, at the last meeting, um, under council items, you had just asked us to bring forward what item or what cities we're using for benchmarking, and when we did the research, there actually had been a prior vote by the council. And I believe it happened in correlation with the um, salary study, the compensation study. You all had voted to use these particular cities as your comparator cities, and generally, we use them for everything. Occasionally, you'll see somebody looks at some different cities, you know, sometimes like if we're looking at our property tax, sometimes it's nice to look at our geographic um, neighbors, just because those are the people they're talking to. So there's times when we do look at others, but these are the ones that generally across the board we all look at, which is Fate, Forny, Melissa, Murphy, Ovila, Prosper, Rallett, Roy City, Saxi, and Terrell. So you guys have previously voted on this, so unless you want us to bring back a future item to make changes, these are what we are using.
Susan, let let me open up our public comments, they'll come back.
Yes, sir.
Comments or thoughts? Let me open up our public comments, if anyone from the members of the audience would like to come forward and speak to the council for item number twelve, you may do so, if you're joining us via Zoom, you may raise your hand. No one is coming forward from the chamber, anyone, Eric, anyone raise their hands?
No, sir.
No hands raised, we're going to post the public comments. Susan, at least in in general, my my experience with, uh, when you say benchmark, right? We uh, we try to benchmark against best or something we are spared to be tapped, right? Again, this is a question for you, not not interaction, right? Why not we compare against some of the cities which are at our level of, maybe better than, as University Park or Southway? Why do we, you know, it may sound obnoxious speaking in public. Why this list? Again, this is a question, why the cities? Would we benchmark against other cities we want to benchmark?
Sure, uh, and I have to be honest, I wasn't here when you selected these to begin with. My understanding from staff was that it was a discussion between staff and council as to who you wanted to benchmark, but just remember when we're if we're gonna have one group of cities that we just generally benchmark for all of our K P I's, we can't switch back and forth, so it when we benchmark against some of those other cities for pay, we're not gonna probably be in the same hunt as as those cities. Now, that might be an important thing to look at, but I think when you guys originally did this, you were thinking cities that would be in direct competition for us for employees, and I do feel like we are in competition with those bigger cities for employees, so when we're looking at benchmarking for compensation, I I do think there's value to adding cities that, you know, even Mesquite, that, you know, people who live in this geographic area are gonna compete with us or or gonna be looking at both of us, so I'm very happy to um, ad- adapt to this, to include some of those cities if you would like. Um, but you're right, I mean, sometimes we like to look at it for fees and things like that, but then when we're looking at it for pay, I just think we should keep one group across the board that we're always benchmarking against.
I'm I'm good with that approach, again, that's consistency is a good thing, but I think, again, yeah, I don't want to sound obnoxious in this meeting at all, and that's why in public, right, so, um, I I think we should have some rationale, maybe a
So mayor, the other thing that typically drives benchmark cities is cities that are in a similar situation with regard to where you are in infrastructure and where you are in terms of of the balance between non-residential property tax and residential property tax, for example, Farmer's Branch is completely built out. So they're in a a different sort of phase of life than you guys are, and so when you're looking at taxes, they may have the ability to have much lower taxes than than you might have. So you really are looking at cities that are similarly positioned in their life cycle, perhaps, uh, as well as other factors, but that's a big one.
Well, and I think it a lot, you know, it depends on the subject matter. You know, that if you're talking about fees or tax rates, that makes sense, if you're talking about trying to recruit from a particular personnel pool, you may look at others, so I think the goal would be to get a group that we could use as consistently as possible for it to make sense with some exceptions, so I'm my suggestion would be for y'all to look at this, and then just email me if you have a suggestion of a particular city you think should replace one of these, and we can kind of make this a dialogue and keep refining it if you'd like.
Yeah, I have seen we comparing a city of Dallas, I never thought we are any, any form or fashion comparable to the city of Dallas, it's a big city.
Yeah, I think that was on our our property tax.
Yeah.
It was to show kind of what in the county, what other residents of the county pay in terms of property tax. I think that's why we include some different ones, just to show, you know, the
I just want to see the rationale behind we, I know, I know it is not just up to staff. Council is important, that, Miss, Miss, again, sorry.
Well, I, and I think it's real important to understand the differentiation between the subject matter, just as Susan mentioned. Because, for instance, when you're talking about tax issues, you know, Collin County doesn't have a lot of the extras that we have here. Uh, but they may have an extra that we don't have. And I think that you've got to look at each subject matter, and I hate that, because how do you arrive at a group of cities that you can always be? You know, you can't study rocket flight against the flight of an airplane, I mean, you you've got to use a totally different data set to be able to make each one of those do the things that you want them to do. But then on the other hand, I don't know that we need to have a meeting just to pick what cities are we gonna use this time around. I don't know what the right answer is. I I may, maybe, maybe we need to think this a little bit more in depth so that we can determine how to arrive at what batch of comparative cities that we're gonna use.
Yeah, and maybe it is, we have a core group of comparator cities that we just use across the board, and then maybe for a particular subject, we might add extras because it it lends itself to that subject.
But the extras have to be enough that it would influence the data correctly. Uh, there's good things about influencing, and there's bad things about influencing. You know, it it, for instance, looking at Dallas, just for what we talked about a minute ago, looking at Dallas, who is far more mature than Farmer's Branch, but Farmer Branch is pretty well mature too, as as uh, town attorney mentioned. You know, comparing those back over to Mesquite, which has plenty of developable land left, and as well as we do, you know, I don't know, I I think just some forethought, need more forethought needs to be put into how we arrive at that list, I I'm thinking purely from a non-quadic, uh, quadratic equation perspective, but somewhat a quadratic equation perspective, because it there's it just depends on the level of the subject, recreation, parks and recreation, well, how do you evaluate those determinants? Or or what what comparative cities you're gonna use versus that of infrastructure, because it you can't use Melissa for infrastructure. I don't know that they necessarily have per square mile the same infrastructure that we've got, or maybe you do, I don't know. I think we have to be careful where we're picking a lot of these in some cases, and then in other cases, you know, I don't know, just you see where I'm coming from, I don't know that there's the right answer. I don't think you can pick ten cities and just always use those as your comparators, because it depends on what the subject matters. And how that those particular communities developed versus us.
I I I think you have a good point, so perhaps, what, similar to what Mr. Guthrie asked, we all give inputs on how we want to do it, and maybe we can have one more discussion on this. Council are open to that? That be okay, Ms. Guthrie?
Yes, sir, thank you.
So there's no actions to be, no action to be taken on this one, right? Okay. Anything else, council? All right, moving on to item number thirteen, council, mayor and council, the future staff updates and agenda items. I have one request, again, keep us posted on the water meter where we are with respect to the uh, meter, and I also think something look into the break lines, uh, can we predict it, can we do something about it? I know things happen sometime random, but uh, just like to hear your opinion, uh, maybe there's no solution for it.
Yes, sir.
If we can predict and prevent it, that's obviously a preferable approach. No, there's no rush to it, but just kind of stop thinking about it. Council, any other items?
Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Just a thought that I happen to have, and I know y'all get tired of hearing me harp about this, but uh, is there a way that the accumulation of weekly newsletters that typically are go out if somebody has signed up through the website to do that? Is there a way that the accumulation of those newsletters can go out electronically with the water bill? Can that be tied together so that when the water, for those who get the water bill electronically, who haven't signed up through the mechanism, and I talked to several who they don't sign up, can't find the place to sign up, whatever it might be, but if they're set up electronically, and I agree, we all discussed this one of the la- last meetings that we had, that, you know, well, I don't my argument has been, as y'all well know, we used to get a newsletter in the water bill all the time when it was mailed to us. But if you don't get, if you're signed up electronically, you don't get the physical water bill, so you can't do the insertion anymore. But if there's a way that it could be dragged dragged along, I think it's just another thing that tries to promote and get that information out there to the residents who are signed up, along with a link that says if they don't want to get that anymore, they can hit the unsubscribe button.
So, um, all of the old e-newsletters, the the weekly e-newsletter are on the website. What I can look into is can we put a link on the standard template that goes out with the e-water bills that just says for past um, e-newsletters, click here, I'll check if we could add that. Um, and then, um, then just as a reminder, we do mail out a printed newsletter still to every water bill recipient on a quarterly basis, and we're looking at going to um, every other month, we're looking at that, the financial implications of that, it was something that had been brought up previously, so I think all of that is moving in the direction you're interested in. Thank you.
Miss, you have a comment, Sarah, any other comments? Okay, if there are none, I call for a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
So again, motion made by Mr. Allen, second by Clark to adjourn. All in favor signify. All opposed, motion pass six, so now time is eight or four, the meeting is adjourned. Thank you, council, thank you, staff, and members of the audience, appreciate your, good night.